Hi and welcome to another episode of Delaware County Political News. I am your host Larry DiMarco and today we'll be in Yaden for its Borough Council election. Actually, a primary election. The room was packed and the audience was interested, spirited, and involved. Every seat was contested and all the candidates were passionate, motivated, and focused. Questions were fielded from the audience and it was clear that there was history behind the debate as the candidates had some bad blood between them. There were past events, unresolved issues, and it led to questions and some good debate topics. On the negative side, there was an air of distrust, high scrutiny, and accusations which borderline on personal insults. On the positive side, the community closely interacted with the elected officials, were informed, and demanded accountability. As I watched, I wondered how many boroughs and townships across the county were as involved as Yaden. And so, I asked you, my listeners, are you as involved and as informed as the Yaden community? Will your local government hold debates like the Yaden NAACP? And will you get involved in your community like the Yaden citizens? Now let's watch the Yaden debates.
... Ron Francis, Lorraine Johnson, Clara Johnson, Dolores McCabe, Leanna Roadhouse, and Charles Wood. Let's give them a hand. All right, you may be seated and let the games begin. As you know, you wait for the green card before you begin. You are cautioned that you have 30 seconds with the yellow and the red is showing that you must stop. All right, we may ask you the same question probably that we asked the former panel. And this is for all of you. What inspired you to run for the position you seek, which may have little to no pay and can be extremely time-consuming?
What inspired me to go for this position, or actually, went for the office, is the people. Since 1983, I've been helping, since the Boy Scouts out in Pembroke Memorial, and after I came back from Iraq, I moved from West Philly out here because my wife wanted to move off of Pine Street and have my wife having life, so I moved out here. And I pretty much was listening to the community. There's been a lot of different issues and I've always been a citizen advocate. Secondly, by me running for this fortress, I'm a representation of what young people could be. I've been married to my wife, Ellie Ross Wilkins, right there where I met at Temple University, and I've been married for 16 years. I'm 24 years in the Army, I'm about to go ahead and retire next year, I'm a disabled vet, and I have time. And I believe that you should judge a person on their character and indeed through what they do, not for position they hold. So, by me actually running, I have a lot of people I'm aspiring, like I said, I told them, never fail except temporary setbacks. And whether I win or lose, again, I'm still inspiration for young people who come behind me, and I knew I'd be affecting them though. Listen to me. Thank you very much.
What inspired you to run for Yaden Borough Council is simply a better quality of life. When I moved 10 years ago, I started seeing things that wasn't so pleasant, and I felt though the taxes that we're paying, we're not getting the services that we deserve, and we're working hard every day just to come back to something that we're not connected with. And that's the poor conditions of this borough. So, by helping the borough to improve the conditions, I'm helping myself, I'm helping my neighbors, I'm helping everyone who lives in Yaden.
Good evening, everyone. What inspired me to re-run, because I'm a councilor for the community, is the community. I have passions for this community. I've worked here for over 30 years. My children went to the William Penn School District. I now work with the Public Works Committee here with the municipality. There's great, great things that's building on, and I want to continue in that path to bring Yaden back. I'm ready to see Yaden move forward. Transparency, checks and balances is what I'm looking forward to, and I know that I can bring that to this council. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Councilwoman Lorraine Johnson. I was inspired by my mother. She will be 19, 4 years old come August. She brought me back to the community, and she taught us how to scrub the steps, and how you swept your neighbor's side on either side when you swept. At the age of 19, I found out that I was very interested in real estate, and I went on to purchase my first house at 19 and a half years old. From that point on, I went on to become a clerk with the school district of Philadelphia, a secretary, a secretary of three, and went on to get into management. And I retired from the school system as a manager. I also had worked for the post office, did not like it, so I went back to the school system. I have an awful lot of vision. I truly dream in color. Things can just come to me and I can do it. Thank you.
Mr. Francis. Evening to everyone. My name is Ron Francis. I've worked for the government for 40 years. I've been resident out here for 31 years. My wife and I moved out here. As the mayor said, it was nice and clean, everything was great. Both my sons went to William Penn High School, they both went to college. I volunteered for the Recreation Squad for 13 years. Once I retired, I sat back there, I wrote a couple things for newspapers, also my life improved, so we enjoyed it. When we got back, it's like, what do you do now? And along with some of the young people who can be leaders, why don't I step up and be a leader? Okay? There's a lot to be done out here in Yaden, and there's a lot of things I want to get done. One was Recreation Center, been fine trying to get it to years. We hear, we just told them on the streets, they should have somewhere to play, somewhere to use and anywhere. So, I want to come and make a difference in Yaden. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I want to first thank Dr. Ford and the NAACP for hosting this forum tonight. I'm very, very excited to be a part of this group, to talk a little bit about why we're motivated to do the things that we do. With regards to the borough of Yaden, I moved here approximately 31 years ago with my nine children. I was, had gone through a divorce, had remarried, had three more kids, and all of them have been raised here in the borough of Yaden. I'm proud, I'm a proud parent of nine of those children with college degrees, five grandchildren with college degrees. But if you have complaints about the community that you live in, I have a philosophical approach to that, that rather than complaining about the darkness, you simply light a candle. And so, that's what I've attempted to do in the three and a half years, recent years of serving on this council. There were a lot of challenges, because leadership is not for the faint of heart. It takes courage, it takes determination, it takes faith to serve the capacity on a Borough Council. So, I'm very, very excited about the continued incumbency here and continuing to serve here. So, but I would ask you to, I'm sorry that your time is up.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Thank you, Dr. Ford, Natalie Jordan, and the NAACP. And thank you, men, young and old. You know, I got to a point as serving on the William Penn School Board where I noticed that there were two types of elected officials. They're the ones who talk about doing it, and then there's the ones who do it. And I realized that our borough, we're short on those who are actually doing, who are actually out there serving in the proper capacity, working to reduce taxes, working on the real issues that impact a lot of things that in all panels that we're going to talk about tonight. So, you'll hear throughout tonight what our plans are. We have a Supreme team that is poised and ready, action-oriented from day one, fixing our infrastructure, cleaning our streets, reducing crime. We're going to lay out all of these issues tonight. I'm looking, I'm very looking forward to serving with, to lead Jones Waters, serving with Latoya, my brother. We have a new best Supreme team with Leanna Roadhouse, Clara Johnson, Ron Francis, and myself. We've been working very, very diligently, very, very hard over the past couple of months to build these issues, and we're going to hear them on tonight. That's all.
I would like to be mindful of the fact that we have several questions for you. You have one minute, one minute. I know that's not far. I have a question for the two of you. I have two minutes to answer this question. All right. Please describe your understanding, role, and responsibilities of the position that you seek. Anyway, for all of you, yes. Glad you asked a question, I'm going to go.
This right here, this is the vibe of the councils. This is your job, this is what you're supposed to know. And the peer council, pretty much, you know, do your job, know your job. One thing the council wants to do is actually go ahead and make sure they meet once a month, like they're supposed to. They're supposed to have the forums, they're supposed to go ahead and vote. Also, they're supposed to manage the boroughs, employees, and their finances, as well as update ordinances, delete ordinances, and write new ordinances. By doing these things, it should make the borough run a little bit more effectively. Had it been done, we could look at the book and see what's been done, what hasn't been done. As far as yadenboroughs.com, you can go there and get educated in your job. So, in order for you, before you can get up here, you need to be closest to a subject medic expert as you can. It costs me $150 to take two classes, but I'm preparing for the job I'm going to get. So, when you get there, it's not work on a job trade, you're supposed to do a little bit something, something about actually wanting to do it. So, hopefully that answered a question I asked earlier.
Many, many of the residents in Yaden are familiar that approximately three and a half years ago, there was an election in 2014. And the borough of Yaden was left in some economic distress. There was a report called the Delta Report that had assessed Yaden Borough to be in jeopardy of becoming a distressed community that could put it on the track for the state to take over this town. We asked the question, are there any demographic shifts? Are there any income variations that would cause our town to be, to be described as a distressed community? What we did when we came on board was to stabilize the financial fiscal management of this town and to put in place the types of policies and procedures and financial accountability that this town lacked. We also had to make sure that the principles, not just the borough code, but the implementation. So, we had three criteria. We said that the finances of this town had to be done by competent individuals. We had the second principle was that people had to have integrity that served here, whether they were contractors or employees. We also said that public safety had to be a job one priority for this community, because most people that, that moved to Yaden, moved to Yaden not only for the street, the tree-lined streets, but they also, but they also moved to Yaden because it was a suburban community close to the airport, close to downtown, that you could have the quality of life that you wanted for your family. So, we made sure that we put those particular principles in place and we build on it from there.
Just like Mr. Wilkins did, I looked up for the ordinance and codes, and some of them are out of date, but we know basically they got their guidelines for the borough. They also, the councils also watch over the budget, they oversee different committees, but they are so fairly out of date, we need to update those codes. Another thing, we work with a lot of committees, they oversee all those committees, we need to bring some of these committees back, so we can get some movement in Yaden.
I don't want to be too redundant, I think they covered pretty much most of the items, but I think one thing that, that our Borough Council seats need to really be able to do is attract the right businesses in Yaden as well. Currently, serving as President of Finance, Chair of William Penn School Board, currently William Penn, currently Yaden is not collecting $1.1 million a year in taxes. A lot of that is from businesses and investors who are pillaging our communities and not paying their fair share of taxes. That is the primary reason your taxes are very high. That is the primary reason. Yaden Borough and the six boroughs in this, in this William Penn community simply do not have the business growth, the commercial footprint that's needed to offset the taxes for the home. And a lot of the businesses that are here simply are not paying their fair share. One role of our council that we will foresee is enforcement of that collection.
I see that Harris wants to have a rebuttal.
Yes, there's a rebuttal, because what Mr. Cave is not familiar with is the fact that about 42 years ago, the Borough of Yaden had an opportunity to opt into a business privilege tax for the entire borough area. Out of all the municipalities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, our then-mayor Mullen allowed that door to close. So, the Borough of Yaden does not have a business privilege tax. So, so if you're talking about, so if you, but your collection with regards to property taxes, you have to make that distinction. If, if, if in fact, those businesses are not paying taxes, that is the responsibility of the school board to do that. But be clear, there is not a business privilege tax. Attracting more development is good for our borough, because you have a presence of different services that could be offered, and you can incentivize that attraction to our town, because we don't have a business privilege tax. But let me mention this, unstable government and changing your government every two years just totally causes other businesses not to want to come here. So, it's important to have continuity of leadership and continuity of councilmatic persons.
Sorry, your time is up. I'm sorry. We have a rebuttal over here.
As I previously stated, as I previously stated, you need to go to the code, the job of the councils, again, is to write ordinances. Yes, there's your business privilege tax, but if the councils come together and write an ordinance, that any new businesses coming into Yaden, we can collect taxes from. As far as businesses coming into Yaden, everybody knows the fact that building road and industrial side, that's cut off the upper jar. If you get with your state representative, Barbara Davidson, and Joanne McClain, and get the ball rolling, and we get those businesses back into Yaden after the council, after the council write an ordinance saying new businesses that pay taxes, that's additional money with the half they get to help the school board. Again, do your job, do your job.
Can I just say this? Mr. Wilkins, do you have any facts?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse Council Johnson. Council, the role of council is primarily that of legislators, and that is true. As far as the business privilege taxes that some, that people slept on decades ago, it is not so simple just to say you're going to rewrite an ordinance to bring it back in. That's not true. We have already talked with senators and representatives, don't you think we have already done that? If it were that easy, it would have already been done, trust me. This is an issue that may even have to go to the Supreme Court to get it done. It's not that easy, trust me. Thank you.
Maybe not the right people.
I just want to take you back to Delta Core, that the president council elaborated on just a little bit. Yes, in year 10, it was that the borough was in financial distress. In year 12, the Delta Core group came down and they gave us $85,000 dollars, $85,000 to bring this borough back up. And in the four years that I sat on council, I don't know where I went to. They even gave us, and I'm not accusing anyone, and I don't want anyone to think that I am accusing anyone, I'm saying that the plan has not been worked. I'm saying that the plan has not been worked. There was a clear, precise plan that was given, that could have been worked and would have gotten back up, even to the fact of how a competent borough managed.
Thank you.
If you attend our council meetings on the third Thursday night, you'll see more of this kind of exchange. What I'd like to say about the Delta Report, the Delta Report had five recommendations. They did not give us $85,000. They wanted us to pay them $85,000 to implement a plan that could have been done by your first-year college student. They did the statistics, they did the comparisons, they did the studies, the studies were phenomenal. But their recommendations were that we had had eight managers in 10 years, and that we needed to stabilize the management of the borough. They also recommended that you get control of your financial affairs in the borough, or it would go over the economic cliff. We hired the Pessenti firm, which I stand behind 150%, because they brought the competent financial management skills to this town that we had not had in many years.
Sorry, your time is up.
And we don't have working money yet.
Yes. Because we work building on council together, sometimes I might get a little compassion, which is known as, she's angry, but it's compassion for my community here. When we talk about Pessenti firm, there's no checks and balances there. There has not been, not one financial meeting with any, or all of the, maybe with some, but not with all of the council. Finance committee meetings have been dropped, have been dropped. As a counselor myself, I don't even know what the budget is. If I ask a question on the floor, if I ask a question on the floor, I am told, you don't have to answer that, and I can't get the answer, simply as that.
Thank you, Clara Johnson. Thank you. Yes, man.
The role of a council member is simple, is to manage the municipality, to establish policies and procedures, to pass ordinances. With that being said, if you're going to run a borough, you have to make sure you're keeping up to date with ordinances. We all know that there's no business privilege tax. Yes, we know that. Councilor Johnson, Lorraine Johnson, just mentioned that it's not that simple. We may have to go to Supreme Court to fight it and get it done. Well, why not do it? Because I've been taken apart by some council members for nonsense. This is for the community, that will help, so that will be done.
That's what I'm talking about.
What three issues do you believe are some of the most important facing the borough?
I cannot have a rebuttal.
You have a rebuttal?
Yes. The business privilege tax that Yaden Borough no longer has is a state statute, and there is nothing we can do about it.
What issues do you believe are some of the most important facing the borough? And give two examples of how you would address them.
The number one issue that's facing the borough is effective communication. We have 11,443 residents in Yaden, we have about 4,383 households. If you look at the last elections in 2015 and 2016, you have about almost 3,000 people that come out and actually vote. And I go around and I have to talk, I'm not going all 4,000 doors and go with people. They're upset because they don't know what's going on. People forget about Parkview, they forget about River, I think, River, River Mary, possibly with Church Lane, they don't have more effective means of communication. If you looked at in library, they have 12 computers in the library that's on all the time, you always have people in there, so sending out emails, saying onto your website, that's not effective way, we have a digital divide.
Time is up. I'm sorry.
I think that lack of transparency is one of the things that's lacking in the borough. I think also the fact that some community people that come up by way of asking questions, they're shut off. There should be more transparency in that, in that capacity. I also think that committee groups should be brought back. They governed the borough years ago. We had what was called finance committees, where the community was involved and could put input. We had what was recreation committee, where the community was involved and could have input. We had what was...
Is that the red? Barbara, is that the red?
Yeah.
Okay. Remember I asked you to give examples? The question is, what three issues do you believe are some of the most important facing the borough? And give two examples of how you would address them.
Number one issue, mismanagement of the borough. There are no checks and balances. The employees are not being supervised properly. Instead of being in the office, they're outside of the office and still getting paid. No one is making sure that the employees are showing up for work, and this is not an indictment of all employees, but some employees. So, mismanagement of the borough. Wasteful spending. The borough is spending too much money on nonsense. The borough is spending money just willy-nilly, no policies in place with respect to donated monies, there's no procedures, there's no follow-up to verify whether or not proper insurances are in place, proper paperwork are in place, whether or not the fiber one C3 recognized, there's none of that. It's just simply willy-nilly, if you're my friend, we're going to give you some money.
30 seconds.
And I believe those two are the biggest thing, mismanagement, wasteful spending, lack of transparency, and definitely, there's no intention.
transparency, and definitely there's no integrity.
That's right. That's right.
Is there anyone else?
I believe some of the issues that are out of town, I believe some of the issues are.
Just a moment, the reading should be, sorry.
Some of the issues, number one, we've already beaten down about taxes, we haven't heard that for number one. The other thing, another thing that I'm about was the Recreation Center, okay? We've been hearing one is coming, one is coming. We bought that 2004, $55,000. This is 2017. The last I heard, Yaden School Club was supposed to come, I hadn't heard anything else about that. The other thing too is when you go to council meetings, I hadn't been in council meetings for a while, I went back, it's the same old thing. They should start on time and finish on time. The last time I was there, they had a break at nine o'clock. What was it, snack time or nap time? Why? You should have a council meeting. They should come there with everything together. When you have a caucus meeting, all this arguing debate should be handled there. It makes us look like we're dysfunctional. It's like teamwork starts from the top and goes down.
To the issue of willy-nilly spending, we have four years of balanced budgets that have been certified by the authorities that this borough has hired. There's an open door policy, not only to every office in this borough, in every department in this borough, but there's also a right-to-no request and an open records compliance that we have with the state of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So if you want to know any information at all regarding the financial health of this town and how spending is done, you can come to this borough. Five days a week, from 8:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon, and get the information yourself. So you don't have to rely on any representation that comes from a candidate here wishing to be elected. Now, to the issue, to the issue that Mr. Francis.
My time is up, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There's a lack of professionalism, I believe, that, that popped down. There are some wonderful community groups that are already installed in this borough that because of that lack of professionalism, unfortunately, we're not working with those, with those specific organizations. Just using example, the YADC. The YADC was funded and supported out of taxpayer money, but because of the lack of council professionalism, that opportunity has been unfortunately squandered. Another thing that needs to happen is bolstering services for the, for the children and seniors. I see it in, I see it right in schools, and I'm out there, you know, shoveling for our seniors, mowing law for our seniors, and raking leaves for our seniors. Where's that support from the, from our council? Where's that support from the borough that will both look at opportunities to make Yaden a great place of success?
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I haven't seen anyone show me that going law.
Oh, they have done.
Okay. I haven't seen them.
We haven't seen you do it.
But I have, I have, I have reached out to the Kaye Brothers, I have a truck, and I have offered that truck for you all to use. That's a snowboard, truck to your brother. I did do that, I thought maybe you could use it. But we do have a lot of new things happening in Yaden Borough. I'm really, I'm really honored and I thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of this, because a lot of you really don't know everything that is going on. We do have communication, we do have an open door policy. I talk to everyone I see, so, I mean, anything that people want to know, you can come up if you don't think you get the right answer. Most people have my cell phone number, you can call me at any time.
But don't answer where the money is. You don't get to answer.
Please, Leanna, I have a specific question for you. How would you characterize your problem-solving style? And give an example.
I would characterize my problem-solving style by simply identifying the problem and coming up with a solution. Hopefully, I will have people surrounding me that will be able to help me to come up with a feasible solution, because I can't do it by myself. That's how I would solve a problem.
I think you've, you've covered the skills and experiences you bring to the table, so I'm not going to add to that. But specifically, but those skills that you have, how would they benefit the Yaden As a first-class borough.
I believe my skills work before the US government and will be greatly used here. Started out as a policy tech, went to warehouse, became warehouse leader, then I was a project coordinator. I was a union rep, executive board in the union, and a union treasurer. So I know how to work with people, I know how compassionate they are, I know how to negotiate, I even worked with the purchasing department. As a treasurer, I kept the books, I maintained books for four years. Anybody could come in there, transparency and accountability, this is what we need in our county. We need more people to communicate and be able to be team leaders. I took leadership classes while I was working for the government, so I can bring all those qualities in there, and also the negotiation part, and dealing with people who don't want to deal with you, you learn to sit down and compromise. This is the main word, is compromise, to get your goal.
In the introduction, I failed to mention that, that I attended the Wardens School of Business, spent 45 years there, I came back 25 years later after raising 12 kids, which requires lots of management. I just went back to school and finished a four-year degree at the Karen University, doing a bachelor's degree in Bible, because I am an ordained minister as well, an associate minister in my church. I think that one of the most important things in leadership is that you have to be able to build unity and build cooperation. In order to do that, you have to be very, very familiar with what the problems are and what the solutions, possible solutions can be worked out. We've done that the past three years and three months on this, on this council without the support of the entire council.
Sorry, my time is up. Is there anybody else who wants to address that?
Just real quick, I think accountability and vision, right? So as a servant on the William Penn School Board, I've never missed a meeting, I've never missed a vote. I'm there for our students, I'm in, I'm in and all the time, I'm in there, actually working on solutions. And let's talk about vision as well. We have, we have an opinion here, we have an option here to either look at what the current council has done over the past four years, or move forward, or start to grow, start gaining road again. This is, this is a decision that you'll have on May 16th.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Please don't make a mistake. We are moving towards. In 2012, this borough had no money. And in 2017.
The question is, I just interrupt, the question is, what skills and experiences do you bring to the table which would benefit Yaden's development?
Okay. First-class borough. I bring vision, I bring empathy, I bring compassion, I bring strength. I know all about accountability, I know all about communication, I know all about integrity, because I was in the military for 17 years, and you're toward it thoroughly. So I know all those words, I knew all about that and all about what you need to do. Trust me, I do. And I bring a lot of vision to this borough. In fact, I was a real estate agent, getting ready to go back into real estate, and my expertise in staging and design helped me to create this. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I have been a paralegal for the last 25 years. The skills that I bring to this borough are my research skills. Any information that I put into the community has been researched and has been proven. I do not put anything out unless it is the truth, and nothing but the truth. Therefore, if I am elected, and I am pretty confident that I will be elected, I will make sure that any information that is brought before the council is true and has been thoroughly researched, and a proper verification has been made. I also bring accountability, transparency, and integrity, because I don't do anything that's not proper. All I have is my thirty seconds, and without that name, you're nothing.
What I identify and what I bring to the table is leadership, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. I'm a staff sergeant in the United States Army. I've been into basic leadership course, advanced leadership course. Working with people is what I do. I'm an HIV instructor and counselor here in Pennsylvania and New Jersey. I work with people. My previous job here in Delaware County, I'm a drug and alcohol case manager, drug and alcohol case manager and a certified allied addiction practitioner for Yaden, I mean, I'm sorry, for Delaware County in Pennsylvania. So what I bring to Yaden is working with the community, dealing with people, that's what I do, that's what I'm about. That's what I bring to Yaden, working together, reaching calls, shaking hands, not holding rights, but moving things forward and getting things done. That's what I bring.
All right, can we move forward, or do you want to say something? I'd like to move forward if you can.
Thanks for watching part one. Now please go to part two of the Yaden Borough Council debates.